Good evening, everyone. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation and the God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence before we start the meeting. We might remember, we've recently had two fallen officers in the last few days. So, we might remember those, maybe the ones that's had their flooding. So, we'll have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. I'll call the meeting to order. We have approval of amendments for February 5th, 2018. Any corrections, additions on the minutes?
I'll motion we approve the amendments.
Thank you, Ann. Thanks, Stephanie. All in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Motion carried. February 2018 financials. Questions?
I just want to say thank you to Stephanie for giving us this the new ledger, the ledger report. I like that. It's really easy to read and it's it's easy to match up. I like that. And I had already-
That's that's one of those that we kept saying, you know, it was a journal entry, so it helps to see where where those go. So, what else?
I had a few more other questions regarding the financials, but I talked with Stephanie before the meeting regarding that, so so we're okay with that. We're going to get some answers for those.
Okay, well, I'll check on one, too. You had Shannon on the, what was that, the municipal road aid? Cory can run that one down for me, I'm sure. Or Heather, either one. Any other questions on the bills, financials? Got a motion to approve?
Thank you, motion to accept.
Thank you, Ted. Thank you, Jean. All in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Motion carries. That takes us to the mayor's open remarks. Tonight, I'd like to introduce our two, two of our newest employees. We have Katie Beckto. Katie? Katie's taking the position as bus supervisor. Sue's place. She's replacing Sue. She's going to be bus supervisor, replace Sue. And we have Becca Crowder. And Becca's going to be on the admin desk and she's also going to be with the bus, on the bus phone also. So, so we're glad to have you and and welcome, yeah. Okay, we'll have the presentation of the audit.
I think you guys know me. My name's Kevin Fisher. I'm with RFH CPAs. I have with me this evening Tim Furbish. He helped a lot on the audit. So, he's here with me as well this evening. In front of you guys, as you all are familiar with last year, probably have, there's two things in front of you. One, the Greenbound book is the audit report itself. And there's a separate letter that's a communication directly from the auditor to you all, those charged with governance that we do each year at the end of the audit. I'm going to take you through the audit report itself first, which is the Greenbound book. There's, it's a 53-page report, so there's a ton of information in it. So, what I would like to do is go over some of the financial highlights and then anything that I feel important to cover with you all. Obviously, it's a lot of information and you guys, it's just landed in front of you. So, we certainly are happy to answer any questions that come up this evening or in the future. Maybe later in the week or next week or whatever, if you're reading through it. So, please let me know what I can answer. I'm going to start from the beginning and work my way to the back. At the beginning is the independent auditors' report, which is on pages one and two. So, there's a lot of verbiage in this report. The most important thing, too, is this is our opinion on the financial statements that follow this report. So, our opinion on the financial statements that follow this report, this is as of for fiscal year '17, so for June 30, 2017. Our opinion is an unmodified opinion on these financials. So, that's a clean opinion as good as it can get. Okay, so, that's on the financial statements themselves, that I'm going to go over the highlights here in a few minutes. After that, as always, or as in the past, is the management's discussion and analysis. So, this is something that Stephanie puts together. It's the city's report that just outlines specific highlights that the city wants to point out. Our role in this part of the report is just to check the numbers and to make sure they add up and are aligned with the financial statements themselves, which we have done. So, I'm not going to cover anything other than to say that. And that's from pages three. That's from page three to nine. Okay, so, on page, three to 10, I'm sorry. On page 11 is the financial statements themselves. So, I just wanted to cover some of the highlights. From the city's financial performance for fiscal year '17 had another really good year. On page 11 is the statement of net position. The statement of net position is, in essence, the balance sheet of the city on a full accrual basis. So, it shows long-term debt. It shows capital assets. It's the, it's the big picture for the city in its entirety. From fiscal year '16 to '17, cash went up $1.8 million. So, it went from $7.2 million to roughly $9.1 million. So, that was good. You guys report on your balance sheet, the Oldham-Lagrange Development Authority. There really wasn't anything going on with that this year. There weren't acquisitions or sales or anything like that. So, that is pretty much the same as it was in fiscal year '16. The total assets of the city increased by 1.2 million. Or, I should say, the total capital assets increased by 1.2 million. The biggest reason for this increase is going to be on the utility commission side. The utility commission had sewer lines and projects for Cedar Lake, Oldham County Plaza, and Cherrywood, among others. There's a slight drop in governmental assets, capital assets, I should say. And that's just because on the governmental side, outside the utility commission, there wasn't a major project. So, you have depreciation that takes those assets down. So, that did drop a little bit, but that wasn't, that's what you would expect if you don't have a major project. The net pension liability, we've talked about the last several years now. The net pension liability net, there's multiple lines that are related to the net pension liability. That's going to be the deferred outflows, the deferred inflows, and the actual net pension liability itself. These lines considered together, the liability net increased by about $230,000, which was about a 7.5% increase. So, the net pension liability, as we've mentioned in previous years, is not a cash outflow. The city's exposure to the net pension liability is within the CRS contribution percentages. You guys probably are aware of what's going on with that, but the city's exposure really is going to be, what is the increase going to be? So, right now, the approved rates are for a big jump. And so, that big jump is roughly going to be about a 50% increase in what your, what the city's portion of the CRS contribution is going to be. Now, from what I understand, that's not final. So, it's been approved, so it might not be quite that high. But, when it comes to looking at the net pension liability on the balance sheet, the city's exposure is, what are you going to be required to pay into the system? And if the rates stay where they are right now, that number's going to be somewhere like $200,000 for fiscal year '19, an increase in what the city is going to have to pay out. It seems like it's not going to be quite that high, that the state's going to come in and change it, but you just don't know where that's going to land. Long-term debt, I think I mentioned last year that the long-term debt is scheduled to be paid off, over 80% of it, in the next 10 years, which is very good. The city in fiscal year '17 didn't take on any new debt, other than to do a refinance on the golf course of some existing debt. And that refinance saved, I think, $97,000 in future debt service. So, no new debt. So, debt dropped. City made off its debt payments timely. Total long-term debt dropped by 1.5 million. So, that was very good. So, those are, just on the balance sheet, the statement in that position, those are the highlights. So, as I said, it was a very good year. Everything I just said was good, with the exception of the pension. And that's out of your control. That's just going to be a budgeting issue when you find out the final rates. On the next page is the statement of activities. The statement of activities equates to an income statement for the city as a whole. So, this wraps everything together, the general fund, the utility commission, the golf course, all into one big statement. On the statement of activities, the net position, the net position or net income was $4.6 million. The big changes from last year, your revenues went up by $500,000 from last year. You had some increases in insurance premium tax, compensation tax, and business license tax. You also sold the old city hall building, which netted a gain of about $150,000 after you removed the assets from the books and what was undepreciated at the point of sale. The, let's see. And that was, I think that was it, on the statement of activity. So, the revenue, you had a similar increase in the prior year. You had a little bit bigger increase, just because you had a little bit of an uptick in revenues. And you had the gain from the sale of the old city hall. The next page is, so you have financial statements on two different bases of accounting. The two I just showed you were on full accrual. Governmental accounting standards require you to also show your governmental funds on modified cash basis, which is the next two pages, showing the governmental funds. And it's really going to be the same thing. It's just not going to show capital assets. It's not going to show long-term debt. But, the governmental funds themselves, this is the general fund, the road aid fund, increased in cash by 1.7 million. Also includes the ABC fund as well. And then, on the next page is the the income statement on modified cash as well, which is just showing the governmental funds as well. So, no major, I mentioned previously the uptick in revenue, so that's going to be the same on the modified cash basis and then the sale of the old city hall. So, there's really nothing else on that that I wanted to cover. On the next page is the proprietary funds, which is the golf course and the utility commission. The net position of the utilities commission increased by 1.8 million, which is a little bit misleading, because the utility commission had several capital contributions from assets that they took over, which was about 1.1 million. But, the utilities commission itself increased rates, as you guys are aware. And so, they had an increase in service revenue of about $396,000. The golf course, the golf course revenue was down by about $18,000. Its expenditures were flat. And it showed a net loss before the transfer from the city of about $132,000. So, the golf course itself, the activity, was very similar to prior years. The golf course without the subsidy from the city doesn't generate enough to cover its debt. So, it had a very similar year to previous years. It ends up having a net income, but that's a net income after the money coming over from the general fund. On page 17 is the statement of cash flows. So, the statement of cash flows details where did the cash go for the city, beginning and ending. The main thing that we look at when we look at a statement of cash flows is, is the cash from operating activities sufficient to cover the debt and the investment in the infrastructure and assets that's needed? So, when you look at the water and sewer column, which is the utility commission, you see net cash generated by operating activities of 1.3 million. You see net cash used in capital and related financing activities of 1.2 million. So, that is what you want to see. You want to see that cash from operations being enough to cover debt and to cover capital acquisitions. And the reason why that is the way it is, is because the rates have increased the way they needed to. Some cities, when they know that they, when they get to the position they need to have a rate increase, is when they see that cash from operating activities not sufficient to cover their debt and to cover their their investment in their infrastructure. On the golf course, what you see is the opposite, is what you would expect, is cash generated from operations is $100,000. Cash outgoing is negative for the debt and for the for the debt and the investment in its capital assets. So, the operations does not generate enough cash to cover debt and capital assets, which is hence why the general fund has to kick in money each year. So, that's it on the financial statements themselves. Directly after that is the footnotes. So, the footnotes are several pages of required disclosures that support the financials. So, these are all governmental accounting standards, disclosures that are required to give more information to the readers of the financials. There's nothing, there's nothing major in here, other than the numbers that I just gave you. There's just a lot more information about, you know, for what's on the balance sheet as debt, what are the issues? What are the maturities? What are the interest rates? On the net pension liability, what are the actuarial assumptions? Where did we get the number from? How was it calculated? It just gives you a whole lot more information. So, all of that's in there. We feel very good that all the requirements are in there. If you guys read that and have questions on another night, or even this evening, definitely let me know. I'd be happy to answer that. But, there's a lot in there, so I'm not going to take you through all that. On page 39 is the required supplementary budgetary schedules. So, it's just showing you how did the city perform versus its budget. We didn't have, we didn't note any compliance budgetary issues. The amount budgeted, revenues actually exceeded it. The expenditures did not, in total, did not exceed the budget. So, there's nothing, there was no issues with the budget that we saw. But, these schedules give you a comparison of what was the revenue? What did you all budget? What did you budget for expenditures? What did you spend? So, there's, there's good information in these schedules. On page 49 is the combining balance sheet. And then, there's an income statement directly after that. That shows you the non-major, the other governmental funds. It shows you the road aid, the parks fund, the ABC, and the bus fund. So, it's individual balance sheets and income statements for each of those smaller funds. On the financials I discussed earlier, these all get wrapped in to one big number together, the non-major funds. I'm going to talk a little bit here in a few minutes about the ABC and the bus fund. So, I'll wait to comment on that. On the other funds, I didn't have anything that I wanted to cover on those. Directly after those schedules is the independent auditors' report on internal control. So, as you're all's auditors for your financial statements, we're required to assess your all's internal controls and report any deficiencies that we observe. We don't express an opinion on your internal controls, but if we note something that's considered to be a deficiency, we report that. So, we have two findings this year for internal controls. Those findings are the same. There's in, to shorten it, what they say, one is related to us as the auditors having to make year-end accrual adjustments and adjustments for complex transactions. So, a complex transaction would be a bond refunding or the net pension liability or calculating the gain on the sale of the old city hall. So, this internal control finding stems from us coming in and making journal entries to make your financials fairly stated. The second one is more common. The second one is related to the preparation of the financial statements. This is us having to, the city not having personnel that's able to actually do the financial statements themselves, without the auditor drafting the financial statements in the footnotes. My experience is that this is fairly common, that it's more cost-effective to have this controlled deficiency and to have the auditor draft the financials in the footnotes. So, that's just my opinion on that one. But, these two findings are the same. And actually, this year, on the one related to the adjustments, we've actually attached the journal entries to your letter that I'm going to discuss in a few minutes, that shows you the things that, when we get the numbers, when audit, when we come in to do the audit, we're presented with the financials, it shows you the adjustments that we make to get it to what's in front of you. So, it gives you just a little bit more information of why that control finding is there. Doesn't change the opinion on the financial statements. It's a, it's a separate report. Does anybody have any questions on that? Before I go to the, there are a few things I really wanted to hit on in this letter as well. Does anyone have any questions before I go further? Okay. So, the letter in front of you, it's a required communication between the auditor and those charged with governance, which is you all. And there's standard things that we cover in a letter like, that's required to be covered. Did we have any problems with management? Did we have any disagreements? We didn't, did we have any difficulties that caused the audit to be late? Things like that. So, the verbiage in this letter is very similar, until some of the comments we have at the end. So, the answer is, we didn't have any problems. We didn't have any major issues with the audit, anything like that, that we need to communicate. So, that, that is good. If you go to the sec, or the third page, it says, there's a caption that says other matters. So, if we find something that is worthy of discussion, that we didn't consider to be a controlled deficiency, but we wanted to bring it to your attention, this is where we discuss it. The first one is related to the utility commission, which has already been discussed when we presented the utility commission audit in the fall. So, during that audit, there was one bid issue where we noticed, we went to see if a project had been correctly bid. We noted in the minutes that it had been advertised for bid, but we were unable to locate bid documentation. So, that has already been discussed. We don't think that the utility commission has an issue with bid compliance. So, we think it was an isolated incident. So, we mentioned that because it happened. And that's already been addressed and discussed at the utility commission meeting. The next one is, I think we had the same issue a couple of years ago. It's collateral with the city's deposits. So, there is a CRS that requires the city's deposits to either be covered by FDIC insurance or adequately collateralized by collateral, by collateral pledged by the bank. So, your all's cash is going up, so it's important to have it collateralized. As of June 30, 2017, there was $900,000 in deposits that were not secured by collateral. What does that mean? I mean, there's no impact on that. That means if the bank would have failed on June 30th, you guys would have been out $900,000. The bank didn't fail, so there was no consequence. So, for us, it's a compliance issue. It's been discussed. It needs to be addressed to be in compliance and for that off chance that a bank fails. So, we wanted to bring that up to mention that. The next one is related to the bus fund. The city's process for accounting for the bus fund is that the general fund will pay for the, you correct me if I say anything wrong. The general fund will pay for the payroll and the bus fund is going to pay the general fund back for that. And what has happened, as of June 30, if you look at the bus fund balance sheet, which is back on page 49 in your report, you'll notice that the bus fund has $183,000 in cash. The bus fund should never have $183,000 in cash, because the bus fund doesn't generate cash. The bus fund relies on a subsidy from the general fund to cover it. So, what's happened is, our comment is, we're saying, it doesn't, didn't impact the financials. The financials are right, because the bus fund's showing a liability that it owes the general fund that money. So, the, but the financials are accurate. Our comment is that the transfers need to be made, need to be made timely, so that the fund, the appropriate fund has the cash that can be used for appropriation. So, our comment is just to point it out, to make sure that those transfers get done more timely, so that the bus fund doesn't accumulate cash. The other thing, if you look at the financials on the bus fund, is the bus fund has a negative fund balance of $42,000. So, that means its liabilities exceed its asset by $42,000. So, that's going to be an issue with the budget, to try to get that off of there. You know, it's a future budgeting issue to get the bus fund in a position to where you alleviate that via a transfer from the general fund. The next comment that we have directly under that, there's a paragraph on the ABC fund. The ABC fund is can only be used for specific things. I think the ordinance says the ABC fund could be used for the additional cost of regulating the sales of alcoholic beverages in the city. Right now, we have cities that we audit that face this issue as well. And I went back and I looked at how those cities are handling it. And one thing that I noticed was that other cities are, right now, you all are allocating solely police expenditures to the ABC fund. And other cities, I think appropriately, are allocating administration to ABC fund. Because your finance department is having to do journal entries, process payroll, do things related to the ABC fund. So, one thing we noted that we thought could be approved upon is to look at that and to see if that's something that you all want to do. The ABC fund has, has cash of $490,000, or it has fund balance of $490,000. I think it has a little bit less cash. It's a little over $400,000. That cash can only be used for certain things related to regulating the sale of alcoholic beverages. So, you have to be careful in that that balance is not growing and that your allocation percentage is reasonable. If it were me, and it's just a recommendation, you have a lot of cash in the fund. I've seen other, or other cities do studies on what is the increase in crime and devotion of the police department by having to regulate or having sales allowed in the city limits. You could look at doing something like that. Paying the city attorney out of that fund to do a study or to draft something that says, this is how, this is, we're going to increase our percentage and this is why, so that you have that to back up how you're doing it. Because right now, the ABC fund takes in money and reimburses the general fund for the amount of the police department. So, it's just something to look at. It would be concerning if, you don't want to be in a position where the ABC fund has a million dollars in two years or four years, or whatever. So, but that's it. So, those are, those are the main issues. I understand that this is your first time looking at this, so- I understand that this is your first time looking at this, so does anybody have any, any questions on anything I just said?
Who reports the financials to the DLG? Do you do that, or is that something that we should do, the city should do?
We report it with the uniform, well, I mean, we draft what's called a Uniform Financial Information Report, which is due by-
The UFR?
The UFR.
For the municipal aid?
Yeah. Yeah, so that's due, I think the date's the beginning of May. We usually do all of our cities right after tax season, and then, and then we submit them. So it's something that we draft, and then we send to the city clerk. That's, that's in our engagement to do that. It's something if, yeah.
Okay, because I'm not sure if, Joe, I'm not sure if you're aware, we are actually, the city of La Grange is actually listed as non-compliant right now with DLG. Said we haven't filed since 2014.
You filed a UFR, so with the-
They said usually the UFR, you can't file the UFR, you can't get the municipal aid unless you file the UFR. So they thought it was kind of strange that we didn't file financials with the DLG, but we did the UFR all four, past four years.
Yeah, there must be a requirement on your all's end that's outside, the UFR's been submitted, the UFR's timely.
That would have.
I can guarantee that, and that's why you're getting the road aid. So it must be the audit report itself that they're wanting, that you guys haven't filed. And I can get you an electronic copy, and you can do that.
Yes, because it's been, it was, the last one filed was 2014.
Yeah, it must be the audit-
Caught up on that.
It's got to be the audit report itself. So if you want to check into that, and if you need it electronically, I can forward that to you. But I don't think with that, that's important that that gets done, but I don't think any, any funds are being withheld or anything like that.
There's no penalty on it either, because I did check on that. There's no penalty. It should have been, February 10th is the deadline to file each year.
Okay. Yeah, so when I said May, I was talking about the UFR. So, you know, I have heard that there, there is a KRS that they're thinking about putting more teeth into that rule. So I think that's something on our end that's going to be more of an issue, because I think they're talking about when that's delinquent, having, having implications where there's not right now, as you can see. There, there you, yeah, I've read that. But on, the UFR was the big one for the road aid, is if you don't have that on time, they'll, they'll immediately, they'll stop that.
That's out of the law.
Yeah. They'll back pay it. I mean, you don't want to be delayed, you don't want to be late, but they'll, they'll back pay it, so.
I had one quick question. Thank you for the report, by the way.
Yep.
Now, this audit, just, I think I read this correctly, it covers June, July 16 through, I'm sorry, July 16 through June 17, correct?
Yes.
So any concerns or any fiscal irregularities or anything like that that would have occurred, or could have occurred after June or July of 2017 would not be reflected in this, correct?
That's correct. I mean, we do subsequent, as auditors, we're required to do subsequent procedures to look at things after that date, as far as if it would materially, materially impact these financials, should be recorded in the financials, or should be disclosed in the footnotes. So we would have covered it to that extent, but we don't have an opinion on the financial activity from July 1 up through today. Yep.
Thank you.
We're going to go to number seven on the agenda. We've moved number six to April agenda, April meeting. So we'll go to public comment, public comment. Anybody want to come forward? No one coming forward or coming, pardon me. You have La Grange Utility Report in there, if you have any questions.
I just wanted to ask a question. I was looking back in my notes, and I had a note on there about two trucks that were going to be surplus last, I think it was in May. Whatever happened with that?
We actually had those surplused out, and we actually put them out for sealed bids. We had two sealed bids on them. The one, the 92, I think, brought $550, and I think the 98 brought $850. And those has been sold, transferred, and they're gone now. Any more questions? Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't get to get these to you earlier. What is not in your report is, on April 7th, if you wouldn't mind marking your calendars to save those dates, I'll be sending out invitations to you, but we're going to have at least three ribbon cuttings that day. Hey! April 7th, it's on Saturday. So we will get you down the line. We'll go, we'll do Main Street and Washington all together. Also, the expansion, another expansion that's not listed on your report, is Prather Design. You know Mike Prather, probably. He has expanded down to the first floor of 125, and so they're going to have a, they're going to call it Prather Gallery. So that's good. All of, I can't, they don't wish to make it public, but we, I think we're completely full on Main Street again. So after all, the shuffle gets going. So by May 1st, hopefully, we'll have all those done. We, you'll notice that we had our chocolate crawl, if you did not get to come to that. We had over 460 people in town, and the businesses were excited with good traffic. And then last week, we don't have numbers for you yet, but we had our restaurant week, and it was very well received. All of our restaurants are ready to do it again next year, so that's a good sign. Our sponsor made comment that they were happy with the response that they had received, so that's good. On the back of your report, you will find our new, this is a temporary list, because obviously, we have new businesses already, but a temporary list of the new businesses and plus your events on the backside. And I think that is all I have. Oh, and hopefully, if you've not received it yet, or been able to see it yet, I emailed you the first and main blueprint, a link to that, if you have the opportunity to stop and read that for just a little bit. That is information on, just some of the legislature that's coming through at the federal level, and how small towns are trying to combat that. There, you can sign on and get updates, and so it's just some really good information. I listened to a webinar on that, and I forward that to you on Friday. So if you wouldn't mind checking your inboxes for that. We have some events going on in April that I did not put on here because March is kind of a quiet month. Take a deep breath. But starting off in April, we'll have our first weekend, we'll have our ribbon cutting the second weekend. It will be kind of quiet. The third weekend, we have Author's Fair and a Humane Society fundraiser. The next weekend, we'll have Shakespeare in the Park at City Place. That'll be at 1:00 in the afternoon. And then the next weekend after that is the start of the concert series and the Blue Hot Ranger Tea. So mark out April for Main Street week, month. Yes. So I think that's everything, unless you have questions. Thank you.
All right, next on the list, we have a few reappointments needed to be made. A reappointment of Tom Clennett, Historic District Commission, for a four-year term. A motion for that.
I motion, we reappoint Tom Clennett to the Historic District Commission for a four-year term.
Thank you, Gene.
Second.
Thank you, Ted. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Next, we have a reappointment of Chairman Blake Hazelton to the La Grange Park Board for a four-year term.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Blake Hazelton to chairman of the park board.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. A reappointment of Earl Hespech to La Grange Park Board for a four-year term.
Motion to reappoint Earl Hespech to, to the La Grange Park Board for a four-year term.
Thanks, Greg. Thanks, Ted. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Reappointment of Jay Rogers to La Grange Park Board for a four-year term.
I'll motion to reappoint Jay Rogers to the park board for a four-year term.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Reappointment of Roy Horton to La Grange Utilities Commission for a four-year term.
Motion for reappointment for Roy Horton for a four-year term, La Grange Utilities Commission.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
I guess I could turn my microphone on. Thank you, Mayor. Reappointment of Dan Powers to La Grange Utility Commission for a four-year term.
Motion to, or, go ahead. Motion for reappointment, Dan Powers to La Grange Utilities Commission for a four-year term.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Takes us down to the second reading of Public Hearing of Ordinance 2, 2018. I might mention our city attorney is ill, so I will take the position of reading the Ordinance 2, Series 2018. This is the second reading. Amending Paragraph 52.75 concerning billing, delinquency, and discontinuance of utility service, whereas the City Council of the City of La Grange, Kentucky, has authority percent to statute to enact ordinance relating to the city, and whereas it is desirable that specific terms concerning billing, delinquency, and discontinuance of services be added to the existing ordinance, therefore be enacted and ordained that Paragraph 52.75, Parts A and Part G of the Code of Ordinance be amended as follows. 52, Paragraph 52.75, billing, delinquency, and discontinuance. Paragraph A, all rates and charges for water, sewer, and garbage shall be billed to the owners or occupants of the premises. All users shall be billed monthly, including any unpaid fees. Bills are due and will be dated and mailed on the last working day of each month. Bills are payable to, at the utility commission or to any designated agent. The due date shall be the 15th day of the month. G, if the occupant of any premises is not also the owner, both the owner and occupant shall be jointly and severally liable and responsible for the payment of water, sewer, and garbage bills, which if unpaid, shall constitute a lien upon the premises. A pre-disconnect notice shall be sent by regular US mail to the owner and the occupants. If the water service, sewer service, or garbage pickup service is discontinued, or discontinued by the La Grange Utility Commission by the reason of billing, delinquency, and the payment of any water, sewer, or garbage bills, reconnection of such services shall not be made until the owner or occupant pays all the past due charges and penalties owned, plus the amount of $50 as a disconnection and reconnection fee. The ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and publication. First reading, February 5, 2018. Second reading, March 5, 2018, City of La Grange, Kentucky. Do we have a motion on Ordinance 2, Series 2018?
Motion to accept Ordinance 2, 2018, amending Series 52.75, 52.75.
Second. Thank you, Trey. Thank you, Ted. Got a motion or a second? We need a motion to go into public hearing?
Motion for public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, we're now in public hearing. Anyone like to come forward, comment on the Ordinance 2, Series 2018? No one coming forward? Need a motion to go out of public hearing? So move. Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Discussion by City Council on the ordinance? No one got any discussions? We got a motion and a second? Stephanie, would you call the rules, please?
Jason?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Trey?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Seven to zero. Motion carries. Thank you. Anyone got any old business to bring before us?
I just wanted to update real quick on the Vision Committee and the Foundation Committee. We met, sorry, we met, I believe it was February 20th for the Foundation, and there was an approval at the, at that meeting to allocate up to $20,000 out of the Foundation for the Vision Committee to obtain environmental assessment and topographical surveys on the green space. So we are working currently on that to get bids, so that we can come, you know, spend the least amount of money possible on that. And then I also just wanted to announce that the Vision Committee will meet again on Tuesday, March 20th. And I think we said 5:00, but let me double-check. Yes, at 5:00, and we'll discuss those bids at that time, and hopefully be able to make a decision to move forward with, with bringing in somebody to do that work on the green space.
But, commence, or-
I don't think we need to, Jean, because it's out of the Foundation, and you all already approved us to spin that out of the Foundation.
That's right. Let's meet in May at City Hall.
Yes, at City Hall.
March 20th. Okay. Thank you, Ann.
Thanks.
Joe, do we need a new budget committee for this year?
The Ordinance Committee's taking care of it.
Do we need to set an ordinance meeting?
I propose, unfortunately, it's the day after the Vision Committee, but the 21st of March, or March 28th. Open to either one. I don't know if there's a preference.
28th is fine with me.
Are you not able to do the 21st, Shannon, or is-
21st, 21st is good as well.
Yeah, that should be fine for me.
Okay.
If I could just, can it be later than 5?
Oh.
Like, what time?
Five thirty or six?
Can we do 5:30 or 6? Can we do 6?
6.
Okay.
Okay. So it'll be Wednesday, March 28th, at 6:00. So it'll be Wednesday, March twenty-eighth, at six o'clock.
Twenty-eighth or the twenty-first?
Twenty-eighth.
Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, at six.
At City Hall.
And something else coming up, March thirty-first, the Lagrange Community Center's going to have their Easter egg hunt at eleven-thirty, so if anyone's interested in that. And then we did discuss the geese again at the, at the Park Board meeting. And, Joe, did you talk to Blake regarding that? They were going to, from here on out, it was my understanding that they were going to not call for the geese runner unless it was needed. Like, in the past, they've been coming up.
That's a nice meeting.
Right. So they're going to let it go for, for a few weeks, and then if, you know, they find that it's getting worse, then they'll go back and have them to come back out again.
You're going to chase geese, right? I'm teasing.
Is this, is this the golf course you're talking about?
Wilburn Park.
Wilburn Park. Who's checking the golf course? Is that Blake, or, or waiting for, is that Melissa, guy Melissa going to the golf course?
Yes.
I think so.
Okay.
Because we had some concerns, again, with the, with the geese bill. It was, it was, yeah, almost five hundred, and I know we had a lot of cold weather and, you know, below freezing, so we were just, we were just concerned with the amount of bills that we had received for those, the last two months. It just seemed like a lot.
You weren't the only one, so, concerned somehow.
Well, I don't really, you know, I told Blake that I haven't seen the geese go over. And they always go over my house. Two flocks of them every single day, but I haven't seen one of them. I don't know. So that's why I'm going to go out and see if he's really bringing them out there.
Ambrose goes through the parks every morning, so...
Who does?
Ambrose Brown, or, he works for Public Works and also works at, yeah. He goes through the parks every morning.
And then if anyone is interested in the community, at the Glens, on May twelfth, they're going to have a community cleanup day, because apparently it's a little muddy and got a little dirty over there, so they're going to have a cleanup day for any volunteers, anyone that wants to come out and help.
May the twelfth?
May twelfth, mhm.
At the Glenn?
They didn't say a time.
They didn't specify a time yet.
Last time, it was like eight or eight-thirty.
They're going to let people know the time?
I think so. They were just discussing a, a date.
The next, next meeting is the second Monday in April, and it's actually at Wilburn Park, and they're going to announce the time then. I think that's what they said. And then a couple of other things happening. April ninth is the opening day for the North Oldham Little League, and the parade for that is on the fourteenth of April.
We were also talking about the trash cans. I could not believe we paid a thousand dollars for a trash can, but he told me to go out and beat on it. Apparently we can't hurt it, but a thousand dollars for a trash can.
Probably save money in the long run for the time they, way they beating others up, so. Alrighty, what else? Anybody else? Anything? Old business, new business? We got it covered? Anyone else? Okay, we, we've got a executive session, sixty-one point eight-ten F, discussions hearing which might lead to appointment, dismissal, or dismissal of an individual employee. We got a motion going to executive session?
Motion for executive session.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're now going to, shouldn't take very long, so.
So, may I also...
So, they also.
I've got you.
No, mainly.
Thanks. That is on my top.
Yeah.
First guy's drink. I can't ever tell, I can't get. He was, he was coming. You know, I've been. Yeah, yes, yes. I'm getting somebody's. And he's through.
For that much.
It's not. Yeah, I suppose. You go down since you're working. Now, they obviously, it's like it was an age. I came back and. Came back and. Where it now help, which is his property. We don't know where it is. And we try to. You know, it's gonna be on back one nine fifteen feet of property. It's not those types of property. Ten thousand dollars. Now, it didn't tell. Hey, they go. Hey, make sure. Worked out right when they do, do that, the road gets sand up to, I use them by them bring it all the way up to the. I don't want to break rock. Cause that's what they did, that's what they do.
Yeah, thanks. Do you want to have lockers for that?
I tell you, one thing, I'm gonna back on that. They have done very good at telling.
Oh.
To withstand the lock. This is a big. It was a good. Don't like your time. I don't like the. Hair, that's a good. Really. If you, if she's got pay bills, she's making that safe, you wanna think how much it's safe to say. She doesn't want to talk. No, hey, you know, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, see, if you lived in a city, used to, the city employees have voting block. Now, and it would make it interesting to take fifteen, twenty feet back from the old days. That was a voting block, that is, you gotta play the police department and the, and everybody that's here in the city. People take their. At the, one time they told us.
And you asked for an extension.
Yeah, but. You know, please proceed tomorrow.
But from the pictures, I thought we got another interaction. Because. There's not the extension. I got one year. He shut me down. So, yeah, see, I don't know, I've never gone through this shit, so I don't know what you already do, what you already have in place. It just, the thing that. Well, it's not just like the. It's the, um, one thing's about the town. Now, what could the little house, Trish says again.
Well, like we, permission stop, so the interest, um, that has the sign, you know, so I was, so I heard the creators. And they redid the entrance, April place.
Yeah, it's like, like, because I'm from around here.
Um, there was a seven percent three or four times, and then they provide everything else in the last. It's four, or at least it's over there contracted.
Get them better and that will.
Forty times, if it's a wish of the staffs. And then most of the staffs are just.
Then I see. That was playing.
No, it did those.
Okay. So, finally, I just. You mean.
But they, it's like the. They were pressed two P S, and it was an electric treacherous, to turn, so to turn, or to find some broken thing.
It used to be the fish house. Yeah.
The best way to go. It always sends fifty three, it's a least change. Take a left, leave and arrive on third.
So, third.
Like that last list, past the apartments, past the cemeteries, I mean, that way. My brother is like, maybe we didn't go out there. So, they, I guess, just always. And.
Well.
And there're all those edges on the left. It's narrow and it kind of goes up or forth. And it does as well. I see, of course, in hot time, the cars coming down. Yeah. We were actually, I love, uh, something.
Well, yeah. And I wonder if it's also.
You hear a phone. Or somebody, like, even that. I pulled it up. I don't know, we make a difference, so how do you. A lot of people. And then, now, I'm ready to. Be in the house.
Is that where you got that on party? Isn't that around Thursday?
Yeah, Thursday.
My days are all running together. Today feels like Tuesday.
My wife and I, but something. How fun is that?
But it's still.
She says you talk.
I like to be the color myself where it's quiet.
We will go back for the.
Well, I'll ask you to update it because we've got.
She started the next track.
Yeah. It's like forty two all the way. And they. But don't. Those are all. Sorry, because they probably won't be there for that. They'll look each new one too. I think everybody's. We realize.
It is. And maybe a motivational. Job.
I'll see you.
Or. Is that going? Jared's got a couple of. That was schools. Must not work.
We're outside to be at eight thirty, so I'm, I'm.
Yeah.
I'd like to be. I see you. Thank you. I'm. And take your chances and nothing else.
Well, all they do is go and say, you motion adjourn. After the executive.
Yeah.
That's no, it's not me.
The city wasn't really long. Longer than this.
Cause everything else we're in camps. We're going to that. Maybe. It's some more chairs. Last week. You know, you get headshakers, but then we can't. And it feels cold. Do you remember something? We helped out in the. You know, like, we can't. Five hundred and eighty. That means. Eighty, eighty, eighty. But what happens is, one year, four years, two years, you know, there's not four yet. So, it's a great deal of service. We'll do a, we'll do a Friday. And this week we'll do one Friday, two Saturday. You get hurt after.
Yeah.
The normal ones, I forget the. And that's probably. We'll do the.
Okay. His face was.
Just shake your mind on the other thing. You can say.
Make a motion to go out of executive session?
Second in.
Motion out of executive session, a second all in favor?
Aye, aye. Motion to adjourn.
Oh, subventions, motion carries, we're out of executive session.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
When, I, I think we, um, going back to old business, new business, I think we need to determine our next meeting.
Okay.
I would suggest April ninth, just because of the potential of spring break for three of us here, and we're not sure about Ms. Pollard's health issue, um.
How many do I have to have?
Five.
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 See, I wanna, y'all will be calling a special meeting for the ninth of April, is that what you're gonna plan on doing?
Well, we just wanna move to regular meeting cause of nine.
It'd still be considered a special meeting though.
Technically, but there's no second readings on, so there's no difference in technicalities, I guess. If that's okay with our schedule.
Where would we be for that meeting?
Here.
It'd be, it'd still be here, even though it's a special meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it called a special meeting, or is it moving to special meeting?
It's a special meeting.
Okay.
It's a special meeting, April the ninth?
When it's publicized, can it be publicized so that, uh, public knows that it's replacing the regular meeting of April second, so they don't show up on April second too?
I was gonna suggest that.
Thank you.
I'll post it on our website and Facebook page and wherever.
Thank you.
We are not having meetings at people's.
No, I'm afraid we won't have a quorum, so I, it's best just to not even try to do spring break with the ones that's going on in spring break, and maybe like Jason says, with the health issue we have, so. Alrighty.
Could it be at the same time, since there's a park, the park board has also done the same thing, they've moved their meeting to that Monday as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, for spring break as well.
Yeah, we'll, we'll still have our meeting at six thirty.
Okay, thank you.
Park board meeting's still at five?
Uh, yes, it'll still be at five and, uh.
Okay.
Their next one's at, um, we may have already said it, Wilburn Park.
All right, what else? Anything else?
Motion to adjourn. Seconded.
Second.
We got a motion adjourned, did we get a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, we adjourn, thank y'all.